All business, can I have a motion, please? Let's see that agenda, I guess. I'll wait for that to go up.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. We had a motion to approve the minutes of the June 23 meeting?
I actually haven't seen them. The ones that were length were on charter review from 616. So unless there is something that could just be projected, I probably won't vote.
Second.
They were emailed to us, too.
Yeah.
Were they emailed from Kathleen?
Tina.
From Tina, a real quick look.
Okay.
Like every week.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the last meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, thank you. Moving on to item 1.2 in all business emergency resolutions, recreational vehicles, and declaration of emergency of public health. Kathleen?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. So as you can remember, a while ago, back in March of 2020, the council did approve a declaration of emergency due to a public health emergency. There was a couple subsequent extensions because they did have termination dates. The last one was on May 5th. That allowed the resolution to be continued in effect until the council takes action to terminate it. So we're reviewing all these as we're moving forward and waiting for the state's declaration to come forward. We have not seen any proclamations from his office yet. But I did want to have this conversation with the council. The current declaration has been used specifically to open up resources for funding from FEMA and other federal and outside funding agencies. And also, and actually I can read section 3 of the original emergency. It authorizes the county to enter into contracts and incur obligations necessary to combat such emergency to protect the health and safety of the citizens of Clark County and provide emergency assistance to victims in such an emergency. This funding also allowed us to streamline some of our processes with, specifically with procurements and services. Normally, when we are going to contract out for services or supplies, we go through a public bidding process. With this declaration, it does allow the county and the council to approve a more streamlined process in order to either receive funding quicker or do direct contracts so that we can get services in the community. A specific example of this is just recently at the last council meeting where the council did approve the $15.5 million for the homeless support using this ARPA funding. If this declaration is terminated by the council because we have not entered into any procurement contracts, this will put this process out at a minimum of four to six months because we would have to go through a request for proposal, request for application, and a public solicitation process. So it is my, and I can assure you that every item is reviewed by staff and that we have been using public solicitation processes required by law that have not, do not have a direct impact for the COVID response. And that does, that would continue if our emergency declaration remains in effect. The council still has and will see all of those contracts come before you and the requests so that you would actually see what would be a quicker turnaround versus having to go out for a full public solicitation. So I wanted to make sure that the council understood what you can do. You can certainly terminate it upon council direction, but if you do, I do want to make sure that the council is aware that if you have specific requests like the homelessness that was just approved, those service timelines and the delivery would be delayed significantly in order to follow the public solicitation process. I'm more than happy to answer any questions right now, and I also do have staff from both public health and the community services as well, if there's questions.
Questions of the council?
I do, Madam Chair.
Counselor Mevage?
So when we first started talking about this, well, let me just cut to the chase. Why can't we amend the declaration just to apply to these emergency contracts that we need in place right now to provide immediate relief? Because I don't want to extend in general these broad-reaching declarations of emergency. You know, many counties have been chafing at these, the broad brush emergency declarations that have been force-fed to us from the state. So I don't want to go, now that the state is alleviating them, I don't want to continue them. But we do need these contracts, especially for the homeless, and I'm sure there are other areas where we want to proceed with an expedited process to bring the necessary resources to bear when we need them, which is right now. So why can't we just amend the declaration to only apply to these emergency contracts?
I believe the current, or the declaration that was adopted is specific for these contracts due to the public health emergency. So it is specific to that. This does not provide other county departments or contracts to bypass that process. It has to be specifically related to the public health emergency. And again, the second piece is it could restrict some funding from FEMA or other funding sources if we don't have the emergency declaration. But the, and I'll ask, I don't know, the one that was sent this morning, because this last one that they had up was the extension, the original resolution, you can actually see on there.
I'm not sure I totally.
If you go down to section 3, it says that this plan that is authorized the county to enter into contracts and incur obligations necessary to combat such emergency to protect the health and safety of the citizens. So it is specific to the contracts. It's specifically said in section 3. Counselor Mevage here, muted.
This is not tied then, I thought by the agenda that this is tied to recreational vehicles use. We had, you know, paused the brand new code.
That's a separate one.
It is separate.
We have two. So this is the first one. This is our main public health emergency declaration that was approved. The second one is the declaration of emergency regarding the RVs. That one specifically says it would terminate 30 days after the original resolution is terminated. We could probably certainly update the original one and bring that back to council to terminate that service if you would like to with regards to the RVs.
Other comments of the council? Actually, I'll just make a comment. Because of the chafing of a lot of our constituents about what the governor, the broad emergency efforts of the governor, which also shut things down, I think the citizenry that I've heard from are really tired of this. And I think that us going beyond what the state is requiring, or, you know, once the state has pulled these emergency orders, it just seems to me that we should be complying with it, with not having emergency orders. I understand, you know, the difficulty maybe of having these particular contracts. To me, even though it does speak specifically to these contracts, I think both of these declarations need to be dropped. I don't, I don't feel like I want to extend them, but I'm only one person. So, but I give you that as far as my viewpoint. I just don't, I don't think it's a wise move. I do not understand one of the statements, Kathleen, that you said that FEMA, FEMA, the Federal Emergency Agency, would not respond? I mean, that's what they do. Why would they not respond to us? That's their job.
This is specifically regarding receiving funding. There are certain funding that we receive, such as FEMA, that would actually fund if there was a vaccine, for example, if there is a vaccination site that is not done in a healthcare facility, and there has to be a separate one. The funding comes from FEMA. If we do not have an emergency declaration, we will not receive that funding. Part of the, and that could be for other type, the purpose of our emergency declarations is really to open up and be able to get as much resources as we can available to us. Without it, that will be restricted or not, or not applicable to the county. And I would like to share, too, on the proclamations of the governor with closing, this does not prohibit any, or does not include any restrictions on businesses being open or any of that. This is strictly just related to contracts and streamlining that process and also opening up outside resources such as FEMA funding and other funding opportunities.
Madam Chair. And Kathleen, also, what, so if we don't have this emergency declaration in place and we have to go out to our regular standard processes to get this, get these funds into the community, what, what's the impact there with, if we're not able to streamline through this emergency declaration?
Sure. So we would have to go through a public solicitation process. So for example, the homeless support that we just approved, the $15.5 million, staff is going to have to create the request for qualifications or request for proposal information, which takes a while because we want to make sure we're getting all those details right because there are certain laws that we have to follow with that process. We need to send that out to potential vendors and provide them enough time to respond. Then there is an evaluation period, and then there's contract negotiations. So at a minimum for that specific contract, it would take four to six months at a minimum. That is fast-tracking that process. So with that said, that service would not actually go into our community until five or six, four to six months later. So this really does, I mean, there's, there's a lot of legal requirements and review that we need to take into place. The eviction and rental providers, it's the same, the same process. So there is apparently some more money that's going to be coming. And what the county has currently been doing is contracting with everybody who's willing to help. And we have not been eliminating anybody. So if we're getting funding in, that may actually be time-sensitive as well, we're delaying turning that funding around to help community members, and we may miss deadlines, too, if there's a specific deadlines tied to the funding.
Yeah, and I think, and that's my biggest concern. I think if we can, I think to your point that this does not provide any restrictions. It's not about mask mandates. It's not about business restrictions of any kind. It's specifically about getting this money into the community as quickly and as efficiently as we can so that it can serve the purpose it was, it was designed to serve. If we can make this very, very clear and straightforward, I would support your recommendation to do that. I don't know why we wouldn't do that.
And I would, I would agree with that. I think that lifting, the state may be lifting requirements and allowing folks to go to the movies full of people, but we're still trying to address the impacts of a pandemic. And if not having this ability to, to move quickly means that we will not be able to help people who need help, then I think that defeats the purpose of having it in the first place. So I think it would be good to extend it. And it is, it is, it is narrow, and I think that that is good. And our community wants folks to get service and get help, and this makes that happen.
So I just have one other brief comment. I certainly agree with the last two comments. I mean, that's the rub that we have right now. But just going line by line from the last extension on this emergency, it kind of drops off after May 4th, when, when our case numbers were continuing to increase. I mean, you can look at all these wherasses as basically a historical record in justifying the emergency, but certainly now all of our case numbers are starting to drop off. I just wish we could amend this to be a little bit more clear and concise and up-to-date, especially as there's a new whereas, and that's the governor's now dropped his emergency orders in many regards. But I, I want to get this funding out to the community. We need it now, as I stated. I don't want to put impediments in place. I guess I don't understand why we can't, can't do that separately for these needs. And if we do it with road projects, when a, when a bridge is undermined and we need an emergency contract out there to address it. So I'm just not completely convinced that this is the only way to go. But I would like to see at least the declaration extension amended so it's accurately stating the situation we're in presently.
Yeah, Kathleen, we can amend this, can't we? I mean, and just, yeah.
Absolutely. Yes, so we can, we can certainly add another whereas and identify, we don't have the official proclamation from the governor's office, but we, we're watching for it because we anticipate it should be coming anytime. So yes, we can get something drafted and amend that. And Counselor Mevage, with regards to, I really do appreciate your comment about public works and bridges. So those are specific instances, like if a bridge washed out or a road washed out, that call for a specific declaration to open up that funding. This would be specific just to the public health and that response in ARPA. And then any time that staff is asking to not go out for a full public process, that comes to the council. So for example, the sole source, and you do approve those or not approve if you choose, and that's based on other criteria established in law with the public procurement process.
Thank you. So I would support it if, with the amendments of the declaration, just to be a little bit more timely and accurate as the situation we're in today. I appreciate all the explanation.
Okay, so if we can, once we do have that declaration, so how do we handle this then?
I'll, I'll bring it back to a council time, and that will happen after, of course, we get the governor's proclamation so that we're accurately reflecting that.
So you don't need this? Okay, go ahead. You don't need this immediately?
No, this is still in effect until the council takes action. It does not terminate with the governor's action. But with that said, the RV one that the council did, that is tied to this declaration as well and is to be terminated 30 days after the original, the county's original declaration was enacted. If you would like to keep that, we don't need to make any changes. If you would like to terminate the RV one, we can include that in the amendment.
I do have a question on that specifically, if I can. The, so we did have an extension by the governor, I think it was just last week, on the eviction moratorium, and I'm wondering if the eviction moratorium would pertain? So for instance, a person has other fam, or other than family members living in an RV on their property, and if we terminate our moratorium and reinstate that, you know, the temporary living law that we just amended, would that run afoul on the governor's extension of his moratorium on evictions through, and I think that goes through September, if I, if I am correct about his declaration?
I would have to have a conversation with our PA's office because this was really providing an exception to our code with regards to where RVs could be. So it's not, it's regarding who can stay in the RV and acknowledging that that might have to be due to social distancing and being, allowing some flexibility within families. So this was not directly tied to any of the eviction conversation. It's regarding our code with regards to RVs and where they can be parked and used for.
Yeah, and my preference on this as well is, is that I, I believe that we should eliminate this at this point in time. Or at the, at the appropriate time, if it's 30 days after the governor's actions are lifted, then then. Other comments by the council?
I support lifting it as well. Today is the 30th. When do we expect the proclamation by, by the governor? And just, I just want to make sure we're on good ground with his extension of the moratorium on evictions. I just didn't want a conflict there, but I support lifting it as well.
Yes, we, I mean, he, he, there was a press statement that went out last night ahead of today, but we still have not seen the, his proclamation. And this, we've seen this historically. Sometimes we get it a day later, or I don't, we haven't seen it, but I know between myself and legal, we are watching and waiting to see that information.
I support the lifting of this as well. However, I do have a question. I'm wondering, so the code was, was put in advance for a while. How is this being utilized within the county, or is it being utilized? And is it being utilized really for social distancing? Or is it, if it has been utilized, is it for another purpose? I mean, what is the application of this?
Yes, the staff report that was tied to this ordinance identifies, and I believe it's in the ordinance as well, this is due to continuation of the public health emergency and required quarantining and social separation caused by COVID. So it is because of the quarantine and social distancing that this is allowed.
I understand that, I read that. But is anybody in the county using RVs for that purpose?
So we have not gone out to ask that specific question. I think what our direction would be is that we were not citing people for using their RVs for this purpose. So we're not, we're not asking anybody in the county to come to us and say, okay. It's that we are not going to go and cite them and, and ticket them for not being in compliance with that code.
And, and given that, I, I've received no feedback from the community or constituents on this at all. So I support lifting it as well.
Yeah, I, the purpose for, was for this distancing, but I'm sure that we, I was pretty sure that it would be used for other means. And even if it is, we're, you know, lifting it as, we're not going to go out there and enforce what people are, you know, what they're using it for. But I, at the, when we first put this in place, we did hear from the public about it, that it could be very necessary. So that's why we get it, so.
Back in May of 2020?
Yep. Other questions or comments? Okay, I guess, so we're going to wait for the governor's proclamation or whatever it is, his lifting, which should be today and have this other emergency resolution amended, and then come back to it. That's what I understand.
Yes, that sounds good. We will get something drafted, and I just want to confirm that the council wants to terminate the RV declaration so that we can capture that.
That we terminate the RV? I see three.
It sounds like you have consensus, but I'd say I'm, I'm a vote to leave it. But you've got what you need.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, 2.1 fireworks use and sale ban.
Good morning, Chair and Council. All right, I am Dan Young. I'm the county fire marshal, and I'm going to be presenting on fireworks and the fireworks ban. Will we go to the next slide, please? Okay, so 5, our county code 5.28.055 is the part of the code for prohibition due to extreme fire danger. And I can read it verbatim if you like, or we just go over the, you know, the Clark County Chair, after consulting with myself, may prohibit the discharge and sale of fire, of all fireworks during periods of extreme fire danger. And then the purpose of this chapter, the extreme fire danger, shall mean a period of high, dry, hot, dry weather accompanied by low fuel moistures. And then for consideration of the ban, the following thresholds must have been met by our county's reported by DNR. And there are the three, the burning index, the fuel moisture content of the 10-hour, and the energy release component in the 90th percentile. And we did meet these on Monday when we put the ban in. The burning index was at extreme. It was in the 99th percentile. The fuel moisture content was at 6, and the burning index was extreme. So we've met those requirements, and I used models from DNR, and I spoke with DNR today and confirmed the models, and we did meet these requirements. If we can go to the next slide, please? Here is the press release that we put out, and it talks about the code, talks about that we met these requirements. I'm sure you've all read those, but I just wanted to put it on here. And the ban is for basically the 4th of July because all other dates except for December 31st fireworks are banned. So we are not banning fireworks on December 31st. We're just banning fireworks on July 4th. So we can go to the next slide, please? We put together frequently asked questions. I'm sure everybody is getting these. So people have been asking, what is banned? And it is both the sale and use of fireworks is banned, and the unincorporated part of Clark County for the 4th of July holiday. Once again, does not affect New Year's Eve. And then who is affected? It's all areas of unincorporated Clark County. Cities have their own rules and regulations regarding fireworks. This ban is just for the unincorporated parts of Clark County. Then why are fireworks banned? Once again, here is the code section. And according to the data I received from DNR, Clark County met all three of these criteria. The next question has been, how do I report the sale and use of fireworks? And residents are asked to report illegal use of sale, or sale of fireworks by calling the non-emergency 311 number. We do have deputies out every night through the 5th, deputy fire marshals. We typically have had reserve deputies in the past. We no longer have them, but on the 3rd and 4th, I have three or four extra units of deputies, sheriff's deputies to help with the call volume. Next question was, are there penalties for violating the county's fireworks code? And yes, it is considered a misdemeanor and up to $500 fine. And it also says the Clark County Fire Marshal has a discretion to issue civil citations for minor violations by first-time offenders, and that is a $500 civil citation. Next slide, please? Additional fireworks bans. All of these were in Clark County battleground, Woodfield, the center, Camas, Washougal. It has, I just noticed, and it just, Amboy is actually in the unincorporated part, they are under the rules of Clark County. Other areas like Northwest Oregon, Milwaukee, Tuolton, White Salmon, Hood River, the Dows, and Portland, all have banned fireworks. The Clark County is the only county in Southwest Washington at this time that has banned them. So that is the quick overall. I know that everybody's going to have a lot of questions, so I am available for that.
Are there questions, Dan?
Yes?
Counselor Brown?
Hi, Dan. One of the questions that I have received several times now is the timing in the following way. We met the requirements for the ban on Monday for sure. With rain forecast for tomorrow in much of the county, 24%, I understand, chance of rain, the moisture levels may very well change, even including the overcast skies today. If there is a If there is a fairly dramatic change, which seems like there might be in meeting those three criteria, will the ban be reconsidered or not?
That is, I would say we'd have to consult with the Chair, myself and Kathleen on that. Because of the way the code is written, I'd have to, you know, it says that the the Chair, does it have to consult it with me? And when we talked about this on Monday, we were, if we put the ban in, it was going to go through the 4th of July. Because of the logistics, the confusion to the community, are we or are we not? Stands getting back up into sales, us going out inspecting them, there's a lot of back. Back and forth that would have to happen. And then the confusion, we had discussed this, the confusions to the residents would be, you know, what what do we do? What don't we do? And getting the word out would be very hard at a short notice. And when we were doing this on Monday, the forecasts did not show any rain at all.
Yeah, I understand it, it just does now, and that's the reason for the questions now.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, we had discussed this and the consensus was, is if we put the ban in place, it would be through the 4th of July. I would, you know, since it is just the 4th of July, I shouldn't say through the 4th of July because any other time fireworks are banned. So and we discussed the messaging and all that.
I would say too that, you know, kind of during our discussion, one of the things that we talked about is how much time it would take for some of the vegetation to actually recoup the moisture, you know, the humidity, et cetera, in order to recoup some of the moisture that has been drawn out in these very high temperatures. I don't, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Dan, but it seemed to me that it would, it was fairly unlikely that. That that burn rate, it's a burn rate, I guess, huh?
Yeah, yes. So there's the 10-hour fuel moisture, which is technically, you know, the smaller twigs and branches and how dry they are. The 100-hour field that which isn't in our code is the larger stuff. And the the humidity helps, but there's, they're not going to absorb the rain. The other issue we have is if we have rain, we have a lot of microclimates in Clark County. And that's why the code stated the 10, 10-hour fuel moisture is below 6% or below 8% anywhere in the county. Because they're taking into account all the climates and and everything, you know, we have areas that are in the county, you know, that are near the river, higher humidity, but then we have the mountains that have different and, you know, the gorge which has east winds and 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 overall the effect of all the the things. And, you know, one rainfall, why it would help a little bit, it's not going to be end all be all with the moisture and the content of the moisture of, or the content of the mo- fuel moisture. So we had discussed that and like I said, once again, it comes down to the logistics of getting everything back and the the information to all the constituents of Clark County.
Have you remeasured on the three factors, like where we stand today?
I have not, I can get, you know, and as of today, from what I understand from DNR, they do their numbers at 2:00 PM. And so they wouldn't be available until after that, you know, like 3:00 or 4:00. So, yeah.
But you have as of yesterday at 2:00 PM.
Yes, and, you know, the numbers do, they do change, you know, but when the ban was in place, we met the requirements of the code.
Other questions?
I I have a few, Madam Chair, if I might.
Go ahead.
So, Dan, we talked a couple of weeks ago and the primary purpose of the talk really was to kind of go over the code and and your confidence as an expert in the criteria. And you had basically told me that you were fully confident of the way this was being measured. And I, I had, let me make a couple of comments and then I'll ask the question. So this has been building through the whole spring. This wasn't just a week of hot weather. And quite frankly, one of the metrics isn't temperature per se. And I, I wonder if it should be at some point, if we ever look to amend this. But this is, we've had a very dry spring. Just walking around my property and I was assiduously watering all day, every day, all because I'm constantly planting. I I have lost so many bushes and trees, small trees, they're just dead. You know, it actually looks like a fire came through my property and singed a lot of my mature trees. So they they do pose an additional fire danger. So and weather forecasts are what they are. I mean, it's basically, you look out the window and and you'll really know what the weather's going to be. No one really could have predicted these extreme temperatures and drying. In fact, most of the meteorologists were were testing and looking at different models because they weren't believing that it was going to get so extreme. And of course, they all borne out with these temperatures. So my, my, and I don't know that the statute could be any better. I'm not suggesting that it is, we may need to look at it at some point. But I did want to make the point that you, as an expert in DNR, are fully confident in the criteria that it does accurately reflect an extreme fire danger for most of the county. And the the question I have, because we just got some emails today from some of the hardest hit people by by this decision, claiming that they don't have access to these DNR metrics, the data. So do we have that available to post publicly? Does DNR have it? How do those that are most affected have confidence that the metrics, as you clearly stated, were met a couple of days ago? Is that data open and available to the public? Because evidently the requests have come in, but they haven't been responded to.
Okay, all right. So to start with what you were talking about first, the extreme fire danger. And our code does say shall mean a period of hot, dry weather accompanied by low fuel moistures. And to your point, yes, we have met extreme temperatures that nobody ever predicted. You know, when when this code was put into place, I spoke with John Dunaway, who was the Fire Marshal at the time. He said, yeah, these were extreme and at the time, nobody thought we would ever meet them. You know, and it was an extreme thing and we hit those. So, yes, and to your point, you know, my house, I'm the same because obviously as a Fire Marshal, I've been watering a lot. And, you know, trying to keep, you know, I don't plant, but my wife does, and trying to keep the vegetables alive and just keeping it safe because I'm in the wildland urban interface and I want to have a nice area around my house. It's it's extremely hard to keep grass green and the plants alive. So and then to your question about the reports, I do have them, I can make them available. You know, I got them from DNR because our code does say, you know, as reported by the DNR. And I have them from their Pacific Region Manager, so.
So you would have received a letter just like I did and the other counselors from one of the vendors. I, if you could respond to them and give them that data. I have just a couple more quick questions. So some of the cities ban fireworks ahead of us. I understand Yakult still hasn't. Are are they all looking at the same criteria? Do they have different codes in place within the cities? I'm just wondering how that transpired, that we were all announcing bans at different times.
Yes, they, and and the way ours has metrics that are ours. Ridgefield has their own, Battleground has their own, they they were following their codes. You know, I've talked to some Fire Marshals and they've asked for our stuff because they don't have anything in their code that allows them to ban fireworks. You know, and each, as you know, we each our own authority having jurisdiction. You know, and Battle, Ridgefield in the center, they, this, you know, the Fire Chief recommended it and that's what they did in the cities because they also Clark County's Fire and Rescue. All the Fire Chiefs agree with this ban. You know, they they wanted it and they were pushing hard for it. And I was following the metrics, I I have to, because the way our code is written. And that is just specifically for Clark County. Battleground, it's just up to the Fire Marshal. You know, that, so they're all under different metrics, you know. We had discussions on, can we ban discharge and not sales, you know, vice versa and all that? And the way the code reads, you know, it's both. It says sale and discharge, you know, it does not say and are. So each each jurisdiction has their own. Like I said, some jurisdictions around Southwest Washington have no means of banning fireworks, even in an extreme danger like this. So I hope that answered your question.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Dan and and Madam Chair. I don't have any other further questions.
Thanks. Are there other questions, the Council? Yeah, I I would just say, you know, this is a difficult. Well, actually, it isn't so difficult in the sense that we have the law, we have the the words of the law, we are following the letter of the law. And and so once you meet that criteria, that really is the action that that I believe should be taken. And as Dan said, all of the other Fire Chiefs around the county are saying they want, they want this banned. And as you all on the Council know, that I am very pro fireworks and and liberty and freedom and and all of those things. With that said, we have to protect, you know, the the others around us. And really, from what I understand and from from this data that's been received from DNR, basically, it's a tinderbox. So this is a common sense move, which is, which is not a happy move for some folks. For others, it's very good. So, you know, you're, we're always going to have, let's put it this way, we'll never have 100% assent on the decisions that we make. But in this case, when this code was created, I I recall, and I think even since, since that, since Dan and I have been talking, we never really thought it would ever be met. So this is very unusual, a very unusual time. And hopefully, we'll get back to to being able to do this next year, but certainly in December. So that's, that's what I have to say on it and I thank you, Dan, for, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of curious. Your number is down there on the press release. Have you gotten lots of calls?
I have had calls, the majority of calls prior to the press release, and I was getting lots of them, I'm sure you all were. Ban, 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 you know, every way conceivable that they could come up with and begging, pleading, trying to reach out to common sense, you know, all that, I got those. Afterwards, most of my questions or comments were, thank you, thank you, thank you. Or, hey, I'm not sure where I'm at in the county and GIS is working on it. We took the interactive map down until it became accurate and it's, from my emails, I think we're going to get it in today, that it will be accurate. But pretty much, if you live in Clark County, unless you live in the city of Woodland or the city of Yakult, you cannot discharge fireworks any day, including the 4th of July. You know, so, yeah, most of the comments, but I have had the others that, you know, it's my God-given right to light off fireworks. And, you know, you know, and I'm sure you guys have gotten all the same ones. Yeah, I was here because I'm trying to get things ready and answering calls up in and emails up until 9:00 o'clock last night. Because I feel it's such a divisive but emotional thing that people needed a response from me. And most of them were, you know, here's the code and here's the 311, you know, because a lot of people are still. We've had patrols out the last two nights, barely anything, any calls. We're trying to chase down if we hear them. We have written one ticket this year and that was on Saturday when somebody started a grass fire from using a firework outside the stated dates and times. So, you know, that's what our goal is, is to go out and we're educating, we're putting out a presence. And if we catch them, like I said, it's a civil citation of $500 minimum. Because, you know, if you have illegal fireworks, then that's a different citation. But pretty much, we're looking for people to, you know, do it. And if we see people looking like they're setting up, we're definitely going to stop and say, hey, there's a ban and you light one, it's a civil citation. So, you know, I I appreciate the Council, I appreciate the support I've gotten from the Council. You know, appreciative of the the people that are happy for me, but I also have a lot of people that are not happy with us. So I I'm sure you guys see kind of the same thing I'm seeing.
Yeah, okay, Madam Chair, if I could just mention one thing, because, you know, this has been a long time in coming because of the dry spring, but as everyone's kind of touched on, these, these metrics were like, we'll never reach them, they're so extreme. But we did, and and the timing just simply could not have been worse. And we had no control of that, it was an act of God that all this came to be just on the eve of the 4th of July, when the tents were going up and sales were starting. I mean, the timing could not have been worse, we're all really upset about it. And and we had no control over it when these extreme conditions landed.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other comments about this or questions, I guess we can move on. Dan, thank you very much for your work and I, probably later today, information will be posted so that others can get the information that would, that has been used for for this, for this decision. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business 2.2, CCC 3.08.011, current use assessment, application processing fee. Who's going to present this, Kathleen?
I believe Michael Fish from the Assessors Office is on on this morning.
Good morning, Counselors, this is Michael Fish, Chief Deputy, Clark County Assessors Office. And with me is Rony Beton, she's our Assessment Services Manager. We think we have a a simple consideration for you. I guess nothing is really simple when it comes to fees, but we want to talk about your consideration to amend the county code that you described, Chair O'Brien, increasing the current use assessment application processing from $150 to $400. So in today's discussion, we'll focus on the Council's authority under state law, discuss a few of the program metrics, share the reasons why we feel that this increase is merited. And then we'll review the proposed code amendment and provide time for additional questions and feedback. So let's get started, next slide, please. I'm also moving slides to kind of keep my notes here. So on this slide, we have a couple RCWs, an RCW and a WAC. Basically, again, identifying what your authority is as a Council under state law. The first one's from the RCW that allows for a reasonable processing fee to be established if one is established by the legislative legislative authority, which it has been. We also have the WAC that calls out that the amount should reasonably cover the processing cost of the application. And furthermore, the cost of such recording that shall come from the fee. So I think that one thing that's important to note, we're talking about open space taxation properties under that act. So that includes our lands that are considered open space, farm and agriculture and timberland as that exists today. And if we broke down open space even further, that includes soil conservation, conservation enhancement of natural resources, stream protection, enhancement of recreational opportunities and also historic sites. So that's kind of the overview, right? That's a lot to take in. But we want to make sure that we set this foundation because we think we'll have more questions about current use properties and more things to present to the Council in the future. We also have a few statistics about those programs, a number of parcels in them, acreage, if you do have questions, we can provide those. So let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. So let's go ahead and move on to the next slide, please. A few of the matters of why we're considering this increase is last time we've really amended this county code was 1996. Our staff is not. Aware of any fee increases actually since the eighties for this. So the 150 has been standing for more than 25 years. We're also set to see our recording fees go up to $203.50 effective July 25th. So that's a hundred dollar increase from where the recording fee is. As of today. And then we also want to note of the significant time for staff and folks to. Process and review these applications, right? It's not just a, a quick application that involves little time. It actually has. Intake and review. We have potential mail backs and follow up with customers about questions about their property. We have to scan and data enter this stuff into our systems and then we even have other reviews sometimes by our forester for. Timberland properties, right? So there's just a lot of step, a lot of county time involved in that. So we substantiated the increase to $400 to include the cost of recording. Plus the staff processing time. That includes nearly up to eight hours. At $25 an hour, which is some of our typical staff costs for processing. That does not include benefits. That's just their hourly wage. As consideration. All right. Next slide, please. So the amendment, this seems pretty simple. We wanted to just amend it. From the 150 to $400 to include the cost of recording, just so it was clear in that, that that recording cost would be part of that application fee. Last year, we had an example of about 28. Different apps received and then we approve all but a few. Sometimes some are withdrawn. I think we had two that were denied last year and some of our application processes. And that's a non-refundable application fee. So our team does their best to help customers and perspective. Property owners look at these current use programs to see if their lands do qualify and if their intentions qualify. So hopefully, nobody applies that really doesn't have a reasonable chance of. Being approved into a program. So we can move on to the next slide and at this time I'd really just open it up for your, your comments, questions and feedback.
Questions of the council? I guess one thing that I would ask is. When, when these properties go into this category. They have a tax abatement. Is that correct?
Yes, they receive a valuation that is not based on taxes that are based on their full market value. It's a current use value. Often those are a per acre value established by the state.
So they would, they would experience some savings. In, in taxes. If they place their property in this. So I, you know, I wanted to emphasize that point is that when individuals put their. Properties in this, they actually have tax abatement. And, and they do it for a number of years. Isn't that correct?
Absolutely. That's a great point, Chair Brian. Really, when they apply for these, the intent and the law, if you. Was we'll discuss later down the road is some of these properties deferrals. The, the shorter you leave them in, the, the less amount of time you leave them in, the more penalty interest is such, et cetera, that you would pay. If you remove from program, the intent on a lot of them is nine, 10 years in program. And then anything after that may be true tax savings to those customers, right? Because the way they were removed. Really is dependent on that time in program.
Okay. Are there questions of the council then? Any other questions or clarification? Okay, are we going to, are we expected then today, Kathleen, to approve this? Is this, are we going to put this on?
We could go to the next slide because this is asked here is with. We would submit the ordinance for public hearing on July 20th. And then we would subsequently amend the county code and increase the processing fee. That would be effective 10 days after the 20th or July 30th. Without your consent to move forward, the fee would remain the same.
Okay. Do we have the consent of the council to move forward to the hearing on the 20th? I see, yep, I see, I see thumbs up. Looks like we have unanimity. All right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time today.
Okay. Are there council reports?
I have a couple, Madame Chair.
Councilman.
So we've had some ongoing discussion, at least I have with, with the manager and maybe one other counselor. About, you know, our local congressional. Legislative delegation came up with, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollar. Grant specific to Lake Vancouver and. We, we need to sort through that, you know, the Friends of Lake Vancouver. Has the means professionalism to administer that, but they need a. Public entity to sponsor them. I want to get that money to them so it can be spent. It, there's now another emergent need. They've. Got another infestation of. Of weeds, an invasive weed there. And then in general, you know, they, they've run up against like the Corps of Engineers requires a public sponsor. In order to issue grants. So I, I want to move that conversation forward. I want to make sure that they can apply for grants and that we. Become that public sponsorship. They. They really don't favor the, the port or the city. Because of. Some past reluctance on both those entities to actually. Make some real significant progress on Lake Vancouver's health. So I want to move that conversation forward. I, I understand the manager is, is being very pragmatic in this and doesn't want to bite off on anything. That would be beyond our capacity or obligate us in, in ways that we can't sustain. But, but that issue is out there and again, they have a new, a brand new infestation and we have this. I, I'm not sure if it's a grant from the legislature, but at least they've set aside a specific amount of money to be spent. On the lake and we should spend it. So I wanted to tee that up as one issue. Should I pause or just move on to my other counselor report?
Um, let's pause a moment and. I would agree that we, you know, it would be a good idea to, to be able to get grants. Or, or, you know, support as the entity to get grants so that we can clean up Vancouver Lake, but. I think I had a conversation with the county manager this morning. So maybe Kathleen, you want to comment on the process. In order for us to move forward. And by the way, the port has signed off all of their. Interest in Vancouver Lake. They no longer have an interest. They don't want it. Apparently.
Thank you, Chair. So just a, a quick little history. I did meet with Senator Cleveland who was behind. Getting some funding for the lake previously as well as Josh from our, and Public Works from our delegation. Our policy support legislative lobbyist, I guess. And, and we did talk about, you know, the needs that are at Vancouver Lake. And as the chair just mentioned, the port of. Vancouver actually transferred their deeds to DNR. So DNR and Department of Ecology are the two public. Entities that currently have jurisdiction over the lake. The county does not. And what I did express to Senator Cleveland is that if the council agrees, there might be ways that we can have an interlocal agreement. To help provide assistance or, you know, that type of partnership moving forward. She was going to be reaching out to DNR and Ecology to discuss this with them as well and then schedule a meeting with all of us. Together. So I can certainly follow up with her. I do have a little reservation. I haven't talked to legal, but. For us to be the sponsoring entity over an area that we don't have the jurisdiction, I just want to make sure we're not creating an unintended. Issue for getting that funding passed through to them because I don't think we would be able to. Tell them how to spend it when it's not our area of responsibility. But we certainly want to, if the council chooses, we certainly would like to help partner and get us to the end game.
Did you want any comments from other counselors, Gary?
Let me. Yes, let me just add though, that I want to include the Friends of Lake Vancouver in this discussion and any interlocal agreement that may result. They are a great organization. They are the resident experts on what the, the lake needs, you know, probably even more so than ecology. Anyway, yes, please.
Is there any objection by the council or? Problem if we move forward with, with looking at the opportunity or the possibility of an MOU with. DNR.
I have no objection at all. And if legal advises Kathleen that there is not a. A problem in administration of the, of the grants, then I would think that. It would be kind of a no brainer because of the lake's location.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm supportive of this as well. Let's, uh. Let's get the questions that we need to have answered, answered and figure out a course forward so we can address this.
Okay, thank you. Okay, your other point, Councilman.
Yeah, and I'll be more brief with this one. So you probably all are aware that I am a pilot and I do a lot of volunteer flying and I. I've been flying with the Black Pilots Association. And supporting red-tailed hawks, which is the legacy of the Tuskegee Airman. We just had a recent. Flying event at Pearson. They're done mainly in the Seattle area, but we had one at Pearson. And so I've partnered also with the NAACP and the Red Tailed Hawks are working together and they're going to. Sponsor another event at Pearson. On the seventh of August. And I wanted to bring that attention because it, it does serve under. Underserved youth and. The black. Community particularly, but all, all underserved youths, disadvantaged youth are benefited by this program. As well as Airway Science, which originally in Oregon, but it also is working here in Vancouver. So. It's a great opportunity to be inclusive and promote education in the aviation community. For our local community children. So I did want to bring that to your attention. It's in the works right now. The collaboration is moving forward. And there will be an event hopefully on the seventh of August at Pearson Airport.
Okay, thank you. Are there other council reports? Hearing and seeing that, moving on to work session requests, WSU Extension.
I can provide an overview. I do believe a mod's on as well. So this is a work session request from the Washington State University Extension. They would like to provide the historical and current context of the Washington State University's land grant, overall information regarding the extension's program outcome and operations. They're looking at joining the council in August for one hour.
Is there any objection to this? Don't see any. Let's set that up, please. Okay, that will conclude our. Council time and we are going to go into executive session for one pending litigation. There will be an attorney present. This is in accordance with RCW 4231101I. For 10 minutes. Okay, we're, and is there any action afterwards, Kathleen?
No, there's no action.
Okay, no action afterwards. So I will see you on the other side. Thank you. We're adjourned.